Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, to order at six thirty. Can we please stand for the pledge?
Pledge of agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Duckfield?
Here.
Mr. Provozano?
Here.
Mr. Shudo?
Here.
Mr. Spatafor?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Bentley?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Approval of previous minute, meeting minutes, we have May fourth and we have May eleventh. May fourth, we have a motion for May fourth, so.
Second by Mr. Spatafor?
Not Spatafor, Mr. Shudo.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Spataforum. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next meeting minutes is for May eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Do we have any discussion? I don't remember if we had some discussion here. Yes, no? Okay, if you have no discussion, go ahead. I'm moved to approve the minutes for May eleventh. Okay, Mr. Bentley?
Yes, sir.
You made the motion, second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shudo? And Mr. Provozano is going to sustain. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chair, if there's no further additions, corrections, or deletions, I'm moved to accept the planning commission agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Spataforum?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Bentley? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. New business, public hearing, special land use, Polly's Restaurant, permanent parcel zero eight, three zero, one zero two, zero zero one, located on the southeast corner of Hayes Road and Twenty-two Mile, section thirty. Ash, Zalija, petitioner. Mr. Bentley, or Mr. Bentley, Mr. Box?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna show you some slides here that'll be up behind you. But the township has received a special land use request from Polly's Restaurant, and this request in particular is with regards to the selling of alcoholic beverages, as you mentioned, located in the northeast unit of the Farm Brook Shops Shopping Center. It is owned as C2, general commercial, and located on the southeast corner of Twenty-two Mile and Hayes Road. In that C2 district, alcoholic beverages are permitted, but it requires a special land use approval by the planning commission. So, as you see on the slides here, where they're located, I'm assuming you guys are familiar with this plaza at Twenty-two and Hayes, and there's a number of items that you have to look at when considering this is a special land use. I'll walk through those. The first one is the location, size, and character. Would it be harmonious? And we do feel that it would be harmonious. It's an existing restaurant, and it's compatible with the businesses in retail center, including others that have alcohol licenses or liquor licenses in the same plaza. The vehicular and pedestrian traffic, again, the restaurant already exists. It's not expanding, it's not remodeling. They're simply adding alcohol to the menu. So, no additional traffic or any disruption of traffic would be expected. As I mentioned, they're not doing any structural changes, so with regard to size and intensity of the site, there are no changes there. The proposed location and height of the buildings and structures, again, they're gonna fit within the complex because it already exists in the complex. The use is not anticipated to interfere with or discourage the use, the development of nearby land and buildings or affect any value. Again, it relates harmoniously with the physical and economic aspects of the adjacent land uses. It already exists. The restaurant already exists. They're changing a menu item, essentially, but per ordinance, that does require special land use. Necessary for the public convenience, the application from Polly's Restaurant states that customers frequently request to purchase alcoholic beverages at the restaurant. That's why they feel it's necessary, and the proposed use is so designed, located, and planned that it should be operated in such a manner that the public health, safety, and welfare are protected. Again, it already exists. There's no health and safety or welfare issues from a zoning perspective. So, therefore, the planning staff recommends approval. As I mentioned, as you see in the slide here, the Regal Craft Food and Drink already has a liquor license, as does the B&amp;B Liquor Store in the same plaza.
Okay. Is the petitioner online, Mr. Box?
I do not see them online.
Okay. Then we'll move to commissioners on this. Anyone?
Mr. Oliver?
Yeah, a couple. Josh, maybe you could help me on these. One, is it time-changing at all, hours of open?
They did not indicate that any time change on their hours of operation, no.
No dancing event type thing?
I do not believe so. My understanding is simply adding it to the menu to have something to serve to the patrons, not changing the layout inside it, put a dance floor or anything of that nature.
So, basically, they're just serving. They're not even selling. They're just serving.
Correct.
Okay. That's it. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I've been frequenting that restaurant many times. I think the way the original owner had it set up, he had it set up to serve liquor because the back of the restaurant has a part to it. As far as dancing, in my opinion, there would be no room to have dancing in there because the tables and chairs and everything are like that. And as far as a family-run business, I think it's a good business in our township, and it'd be my thoughts, we should move forward with this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I did have a question. Mr. Box, would we sort of, I mean, kind of strange about, Mr. Box, just a question and a follow-up on Charlie. Hours-wise, if we approve the special land use, are we restricting it to the hours, or are we being silent to it so if they change?
Correct.
I guess I would just say that my opinion would be I have no problem with it, particularly with these hours. If hours were changing significantly, I would at least think it would deem a second look, so I'd need to give a point check with regard to the hours. Bottom question.
Okay. Anyone else?
I don't know if Mr. Box would know the answer to this or anyone else, but with the Regal Craft Food and Drink and B&amp;B Liquor Store, I'm just curious what those hours are currently.
I do not know.
And that just goes into one of the six criteria you have to consider for special land use as far as, out of any background, Mr. Duckfield was saying if the hours were to change, I just wondered if it would be more in line with the other sport that just remains the same. Just a curious thought on my part.
Nothing perfect, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spataforum.
Mr. Chairman, just really briefly, to your point, Dan, on the website, they show they go from four PM to ten PM, Monday through Saturday, close on Sunday. Like, the craft food and drink? Are they consumed, alcoholic beverages consumed at the establishment till ten?
I would assume so.
Yeah, I believe so.
Jasper, do you know what, and the hours at Polly's?
It looks like Polly's are seven AM to nine PM.
Except on Sundays, those are three, but I've watched and used.
Correct.
Just before the close.
I'm usually there early for breakfast.
Yeah.
You get a large breakfast. My days are, the two in the mornings are gone, so.
Okay.
It's too far away from my circle to go, but it sounds like a great place.
I think this is the second or third owner, and the first owner ran well. Years ago, I delivered there. It's very clean. I don't think the kitchen's clean. It's, I think, a good asset to work, hopefully, too.
Okay. We have a motion. That's right. We have to go to the public. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. At this time, I'd like to open it to the public. It is six forty PM. Mr. Box, do we have anybody online who'd like to speak?
At this time, the only folks online are staff.
Say it again, please.
The only folks that are dialing or logged in online are staff members of the town.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so there isn't any public. I'd like to close that portion of the public hearing at six forty-one with.
Motion, please.
So, motion.
Motion by Mr. Oliver? Seconded by Mr. Bentley. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we have a motion for the special land use of Polly's Restaurant.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, based on the presentation and the review by our planning director and the approval of the comments from our departments, I will make a motion to recommend special land use review approval for Polly's Restaurant as presented.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Spataforum, seconded by Mr. Provozano.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I could ask just a question on the motion?
Chairman.
Actually, I have a question to earlier staff. So, just following up to what we had talked about earlier, to your understanding, would a change in hours, would that change the application sufficient enough that they would have to come back in to reevaluate special land use, or would hours be silent to that?
I think it's silent to that.
Just for myself, I, as stipulated, I vote no on it, not because I object to the liquor license, but I think we should try to keep this out of the boundary, but just my strong case. Thanks, Chairman.
Pardon me?
Are we voting on this?
We have a motion and we have a second, so let's call the roll, please.
Mr. Spataforum?
Yes.
Mr. Duckfield? Or, Mr. Provozano?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Duckfield?
No.
Okay. Motion passes. Onto old business bylaws. Mr. Box?
I believe this is the fourth agenda that bylaws have been on, number of back-and-forth comments and some changes. I think Mr. Orlando and Mr. Aloya have incorporated all of your requests. You provided in your packet a strike-through version as well as a clean version of where they stand now, so I guess I would refer to you guys to any thoughts on changes, or if it's good to be approved, hopefully.
Okay. Let's open it up to the commissioners. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, all comments that I've recorded anyway of concerns and possible changes seem to have been made, that I would recommend approval.
Are you making a motion? Well, let's hold on, until everybody has a chance. Anyone else have a comment about the bylaws? Anyone? And Mr. Bentley, do you like to make the motion?
I'll make a motion. There are no other comments to approve the bylaws as recently revised and for this date of May eighth.
Mr. Bentley made the motion to approve the bylaws. Mr. Provozano seconded it. You know what? Let's do a roll call for this. Who seconded it, I'm sorry? Mr. Provozano. Sorry, I missed that. Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Provozano?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Duckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Spataforum?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Public comments are non-agenda items. Do we have anyone that would like to speak to them?
I'm not seeing anyone dial in online.
Okay. Then we'll move to commissioners' comments. Anybody have anything they'd like to share?
I just have one. It's good to get back to normal. The mics and everyone's sitting here like that, and hopefully we'll have the public here soon. That's it. Sounds good. Okay. Anyone else?
All right. Comptertown Board of Trustee liaison update from Mr. Charlie.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Few things. Last board meeting, we, the fire department, purchased a new mini pomper. And to briefly explain a mini pomper, it goes on most of every run, and it takes the pressure off our big tin axle fire trucks. So, we're able to extend the life of a fire truck, of the big ones, twice the period. And we also, when we get this new one in, we'll probably sell the old one. It's being replaced by a unit that we use for twelve years, so we got a lot of life out of it. So, that's kind of one. Second thing that the board approved is a design for the new, the Pittsburgh Park. Now, that's the, that's the family that donated the property on Romeo Plain Road. It was the Pittsburgh, Pittsford family. And that's gonna be the name of the park, and we're already starting on design. And Josh, do you want to add something? Let go ahead. If you can, I think you had to, or we're still in the design of it right now.
Yeah, still early in the design phase. I know they're looking at a lot of items that could go in that, in that park. Things that have been mentioned around the township as a need, such as pickleball courts and a dog park and things like that. They're looking at all those options as possibly being located at that park.
Yeah. We got plenty of room.
Could you spell the name?
It is Pittsburgh. P-I-T-C-H-F-O-R-D. That's it. And then, another thing, we raised the hard-time wages for the summer help from twelve to fifteen dollars an hour. We're having a hard time getting summer help, so there was a recommendation made, and the board approved that. That was another thing we did. And last, we started a campaign to help residents that are having trouble with their, to run their irrigation controllers. A lot of people have problems with them, and the push behind that is try to use less water. And because, as we all know, every year we add on five, six, seven hundred homes, and we only have so much pipe in the ground, and that impacts all that, so there's a campaign to do that. So, if you, if you need help, if you just can't get it, the township will send somebody over there. You'd have to call in, request it, and they'll make arrangements for someone to help you out with setting the controller. A lot of times, people overwater is the biggest problem that I see in, in yard maintenance. And one of the bigger things that I'm belated talking about is sensors. I think it's real important things that we get censored, that people invest in sensors because many a times, I've driven by houses and it's pouring rain and the sprinkler system's going on, and a lot of times, it's no fault of the homeowner because they might be working. So, it, so a sensor would be really helpful there. And another big help, where we really need them sensors is on all these entrances, because nobody's there to watch that. So, that's, that's another big correction that maybe we can look into. So, so that was another camp, it's just a campaign that we're, the board is behind.
So, what's the name of that campaign?
Okay, you guys, I just seen, had, hand me that there. Here it is here. We just, it just started with one of our employees working on a controller. Generally, the controller you're seeing in the ground.
Sure. How often are you getting the message out?
Through our.
Internet?
Yeah, internet and all our media. We're trying to do that. Just, the main thing is try to conserve some of the water churn up. There's a lot of, there's a lot of practical things that people can do in their lawns to conserve water. And I think just so much is just being educated. And now with YouTube and videos, you know, the communication, we get sent a lot of good information to people. One thing that we are spoiled with in this state is water. There's no other state that's blessed with so much water around it. And we have a tendency to waste it. We really do. It's just a natural thing because we've got a lot of it. You go to other states, other dry states, or other dry countries, you, you wouldn't dare ever take the holes and walk down your driveway and wash it with fresh water. You just wouldn't do it. And, you know, we're all guilty of it, all right? So, we, we probably don't realize how fortunate this state is to have as much abundance of fresh water than we do. So, we should preserve it, too. And that's it.
Mr. Chairman, can I direct a question?
Yeah.
Trustee Oliver. Let's say they come out to my house.
Yep.
They look at my timer.
Yep.
They probably will inspect the belt on the side of the house to probably inspect your belt to make sure there's no leaks.
The valves.
Right, so on and so forth. If there is a leak or I have a problem with my timer, will they recommend someone to go to, or are they just gonna say you have a problem?
No, no, they're gonna, they're gonna direct you what to do to fix the problem. So, let's just say they, they see a zone that, whether it's cell noise or locking up, and it's, it's, when it's supposed to shut off, it's not shutting off. So, they, they might spot something like that and say, hey, there's, there's a mechanical problem here. And just a tune-up, maybe, like you would call it. But there, there's, there's so much to do with understanding water and how much plants really need. And I think that's a big thing. Me personally, I, I would love, and the builders won't do it because it's very, it's very expensive at first, but drip irrigation, where the, where the water never hits the air. So, we're all used to what we call impact sprinklers. Drip irrigation is tiny little tubes below the surface of the grass and just at the root zone. And you're close together, and they emit just a small amount of water. But your, your roots of your plants are right there to take that water in, and you get no evaporation. And that's huge. That's huge. We, we went to that years ago out in the field, when we raised a lot of peppers and product like that. And we reduced our irrigate, our overhead irrigation amount of water by eighty percent, just because of the evaporation. So, but it's expensive. The initial outlet is expensive. But once you do it, it's very cost-effective. So, that's beaten up. The township's not forcing anyone to do this. Not changing their laws.
Oh, we are.
Yeah. But I would love to see someone, you know, try it in, or even the township maybe get behind something like that for a project. This, this to show that the residents that there's a big savings if you, if there's other directions to go with, with water use. So, in downtown, it could be a big issue. It really could be a big issue, water. So, so that's all I can say on water.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's Mr. Oliver, or it's Mr. Box, or perhaps anyone that has knowledge of the question I would like to ask, and that is, the program mentions the Great Lakes Water Authority. Do they have jurisdictional monitoring water usage in all the communities in Macomb County, anyone else?
We buy our water.
Okay.
It's consortium. They set the water rates. There's, there's always controversy in who gets what rate, but that's what Great Lakes Water Authority does. But they don't individually get the authority, to my knowledge, maybe I'll pull a tip on this, if you know. But to my knowledge, they don't have the authority to come into a community and maybe say that you can't water grass this week, or whatever of that. It's my knowledge.
Do you know if our surrounding adjacent municipalities, townships, or cities buy their water from the GLW lady as well?
Pretty much everybody, because that's Detroit. It's all tied in Detroit. Okay. So, so we're all tied to Detroit's massive system, and then it comes north and west and east. Another one comes out for here.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just to piggyback on this.
Sure.
I think this particular program, part of what happens with all the different municipalities, and one of the major negotiating points, is what peak hours are for a municipality, and what happens if you exceed a certain limit of water within peak hours. So, peak hours are generally during the day when people might be taking showers, and the idea is to reduce the load on the whole system. So, in our case, one of the reasons that the township is taking interest in this is that if our, our water usage within peak hour time stays below a certain amount, we don't get penalized. Different ways to refer to it, but that's essentially what it is. So, the idea is to maintain our water rates by making sure we don't use more water during the peak hours. A lot of different people handle this differently. It is a relatively hot topic, I think, whenever it gets brought up, but I think that's the general idea. And the, and the variable between the municipalities, as I understand it, Mr. Oliver probably doesn't, is what that peak hour is, what those peak hours are, and what we negotiate as the amount of water we want to stay within during those peak hours.
That's correct. Everything in this building is different. And this is without a doubt tied into that. Really, we want our residents water at night because, because we're out of that peak thing.
You may need times for that, so what?
They, they're gonna be, all this stuff's supposed to be online. Okay. Lot of good information here for, for residents. It's a start, and it's gonna be adjusted from this point. Maybe we can change some things, but the, the goal is, is to try to reduce the use of irrigation water and help people with controls and help people understand peak hours and stuff like that. It's all tied together.
So, they assess your irrigation system like it's old, is this, that, maybe?
It's, it's water.
It's just water.
Yes. It's not separate. Some communities have separate meters, but we, we don't do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, in, in this discussion about stormwater or water for sprinkling and that, is there any discussion for the community or programs to get out other ways of storing, like rain water or what have you, and use that as gray water for, for plants and things?
To my knowledge, we have.
Blue City Water?
We're not. The, the water department is not into that now. Residents can easily do that. There's.
I mean, as a means of cutting, cutting.
Sure.
The use of treated water.
I call it fresh water and drinking water. Yeah, the residents could definitely, because I know a lot of people that. Yeah, the residents could definitely, I know a lot of people that collect their own rainwater and then use it for the garden. It's really better sometimes. Get certain minerals in it. But yeah, but that gray water system that you're talking about, the system's got to, to my knowledge, the system's got to be in, in the ground. And we just have stormwater. We got freshwater for fresh water. And we got sanitary. You don't really have a, it's not a gray water system.
Well, like, like water that goes into retention basin?
Yes.
Detention basin?
Yes.
That water could be part of the development that could be utilized for watering lawns and drains.
It could be.
Thank you. Mr. Spannaforum, do you have something?
You know, I'm just curious, the Great Lakes Water Authority, and I know the program looks like it's talking about sprinkling for lawns and landscaping for residential. I assume the same thing for commercial and industrial. But does the GLWA also have any type of, I don't know, negotiation or rates, if you will, for those industrial or commercial businesses that use water for their business? I don't know, medical facilities or, I don't know, greenhouses or things like that during the course of business service? Because does that use the township's, you know, does it affect their supply as well to the first business?
My business, we use water for greenhouses. And we don't get no special rates.
Okay, but that's billed by the township that a water purchase from.
Township, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and that would be for, I would think in the township, any commercial or industrial use?
Anyone that needs water is going to be tied to that system. And it's all metered. They meter, giving it to us, we meter it, that's rest, all the rest.
All right. I just, ZB, I have nothing to say, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me? Excuse me?
That's to have an occasion.
Okay, Mr. Tuckfield has nothing tonight for the ZBA. Planning Department items?
They have nothing this evening.
Okay, Mr. Box? Motion to adjourn, so moved by Mr. Shudo. Seconded by Mr. Provenzano. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.